Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, June 17th, 2014. Please join the school committee in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to introduce the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's any public input. Is there anybody this evening that would like to address the school committee? Seeing none, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. May I have a roll call vote, please? A roll call, please.
Mr. Olivo?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Five present.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item Number Five, the approval of minutes. We will first approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of June 10th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Some motion?
Motion by Mrs. Congdon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on the June 10th meeting minutes? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The next three agenda items, five B, C, and D. The reason, it's unusual for us to vote at the regular school committee meeting on subcommittee meeting minutes, but these were the last meetings of the year and we kind of just wanted to close things out. So only members of the subcommittee will be voting on these agenda items. So members of the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12th, 2014, Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee minutes.
Some motion?
Mr. Olivo makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote on the subcommittee members?
I'm not sure who the...
Mr. Olivo?
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Is that it?
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have the Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of June 16th, 2014. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the policy minutes? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Mrs. Quinney.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Quinney. Yes. Three yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. And finally, the Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting of June 16th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Some motion?
Motion made by Mrs. Congdon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on the Curriculum Subcommittee Minutes? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Three yes?
Talk about the Secretary of Education.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Agenda Item Number Six, I have some announcements. First, I would like to make everybody aware that last Wednesday, June 11th, the district hosted the State Secretary of Education, Dr. Matthew Malone. He came to the district to... His time was limited, so he did just visit Southbridge Middle High School, but said he would return to the district to visit our other schools. Yesterday, I received a press release regarding his visit from the Executive Office of Education that I'd like to read into the record. And this has been made available to local media outlets, so hopefully they will also publish this. Secretary Malone visits Southbridge Public Schools... Southbridge. Secretary of Education Matthew Malone recently visited Southbridge Public Schools as part of his effort to visit school districts across the Commonwealth. To date, the secretary has visited more than 165 school districts since being appointed in January 2013. During his visit, the secretary was able to meet with school officials, faculty, staff, and students, giving him a comprehensive understanding of the district. Quote, "I noticed immediately that the school layout was carefully designed and constructed with student success in mind," said Secretary Malone. "While visiting the classrooms, I was inspired by the level of instruction and teacher collaboration I witnessed, especially in the middle-school level classes." End quote. Secretary Malone frequently visits schools to tour and interact with educators across Massachusetts to see firsthand the work being done in classrooms to maintain the state's standing as a leader in public education. Quote, "Governor Patrick believes in governing for the entire state, and he has asked his cabinet to lead for the entire Commonwealth. My observation from the visit is this is an example of strong leadership coupled with coherent instructional strategy executed at all levels of the system," said Secretary Malone. The secretary added, quote, "Southbridge is making strides to close achievement gaps and increase student involvement. I applaud the school committee for making tough decisions over the past few years in order to preserve comprehensive programming for students. Southbridge is a school district parents should want to send their kids to," end quote. We thank Secretary Malone for his visit and look forward to his return to the district at some point. Next, I just want to remind everybody that the last day of school is June 19th. It is a half-day. That's just two days away, hard to believe. There will be a Meet the New Principal event at Southbridge Middle High School, so an event to meet Melissa Earls on June 25th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. That event is open to parents and community members. The Highland Street Foundation out of Boston offers Free Fun Fridays whereby free admission is offered to 66 museums and cultural venues on Fridays throughout the summer. A link has been posted on the district website, but is also available at www.hilandstreet.org. Please save the date for August 20th. Will be UINC's Third Annual Youth Summit. The Leadership Olympics is the theme. I don't have any specifics, but information will also be posted on the district website as it becomes available. And information on the summer feeding program was recently sent home to all students, and information on free meal sites is available on the district website. At this time, I'd like to provide a school committee year in review. Mr. Olivo and I will be sharing the reporting on this, and that will be followed by subcommittee members providing reports on the year in review for their individual subcommittees. So I will begin. I should begin by saying that I had done a lot of work on this in a narrative form, and I lost a lot of my work, so I had to recreate it. And in having to reevaluate how to go about doing that, I decided to look at the goals, the draft goals that we had talked about in October of 2013, and see where we were relative to those goals. So I want to remind everybody that the Southbridge School Committee recognizes that the academic success of students in the Southbridge Public School District is a shared responsibility between the school committee superintendent, the four district schools, students, and their families. The following goals were developed to align with those responsibilities specifically delegated to the school committee. I want to note that this document was originally developed in October 2013 after the resignation of the former chair. The composition of the school committee has changed since July 13th with the resignation of one member, the prolonged absence of another, and the relocation of a third. Despite not having a full board since October, the school committee has endeavored to accomplish the goals originally established. We are proud to have accomplished much and look forward to July when we will have additional support from new members. One of the first topics that we looked at was superintendent oversight. The school committee is responsible for the appointment and evaluation of the superintendent, so one of our goals was to develop an evaluation instrument for the superintendent. This was important to the school committee because the evaluation of the superintendent is a primary responsibility of the school committee. It's important to review the superintendent's performance to determine if it is in the best interest of the school district to retain or release that individual charge with carrying out the policies of the school district as defined by the school committee. The last evaluation of a Southbridge Public Schools superintendent took place in 2009. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees developed a superintendent evaluation instrument that's recommended by both that organization and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. During the course of the year, we learned this instrument may be customized to fit the goals and needs of individual school districts. It became obvious when the school committee reviewed the document that there is a clearly defined process and learning curve that are necessary to implement the evaluation. It is only fair to evaluate an individual on goals that are established at the outset of a year. For that reason, the school committee has already committed to participating in a district governance transition workshop with MASCE, which will assist current and new members in the process of establishing goals and evaluation criteria for the new superintendent. This work will commence over the summer, and discussion of this process will be transparent. Regarding policy, the school committee is responsible for establishing and periodically reviewing the policies for the school district consistent with the requirements of law and the standards set forth by the Board of Education. This year, the school committee endeavored to undertake a comprehensive review of district policies. This was important to the school committee because it is constantly cited that the work of the school committee is policy and budget. Although much work had taken place to develop new policies and revise existing policies over the last couple of years, the policy manual itself had not undergone a comprehensive review since the 2007-2008 school year. Since that time, new laws have been enacted and others have been repealed. Policy review is a continual process. We learned from our peers at the MASCE conference last fall that a complete policy review takes about 18 months, and then you need to start all over again. So to that end, this Policy Subcommittee started from the beginning and completed its review of Section A of the Policy Manual, which covers foundations and basic commitments. The bulk of Section B, School Board Governance, was also reviewed this year. There are lingering questions that may require additional work, and the newly configured school committee will continue where this committee leaves left off. Another priority for this school committee was to review and update the district's crisis and disaster plans. It was necessary to do this because obviously the safety of students and district personnel is paramount to providing a sound educational environment. Not only is it best practice to have updated plans in place before an emergency strikes, but Massachusetts law now requires that each school district have appropriate emergency plans in place. The law also requires that those plans are reviewed on a regular basis. The school committee recognized the Crisis Manual developed in 2007 was outdated. Significant events have occurred locally and in schools throughout the country since the manual was developed. Notably, locally, the June 2011 tornado which struck parts of our community, but in the opinion of school committee members, was poorly handled by the school district, in large part to the lack of an emergency plan. The Policy Subcommittee spent a significant amount of time writing a new crisis response and emergency preparedness handbook. The final draft of the handbook was reviewed by the Policy Subcommittee last evening. It was recommended that the policy be turned... the manual be turned over to the superintendent, who will be charged with assembling local law enforcement and emergency responders to review the handbook and make revisions if necessary. The handbooks will be available for staff when students return to school, and it's our intention that the hazard-specific responses will be formatted into flip charts, which will be posted in all classrooms, offices, and student work areas. And finally, with regard to policy, there was... it was evident that there was a need to revise the district's current wellness policy to ensure alignment with curriculum and policy. Again, this was an important priority for the school committee because the existing district wellness policy was created in 2006. Federal nutritional guidelines have changed in the years since, and the committee could find no evidence that the policy was ever reviewed after its implementation as specified in the policy itself. This will be discussed further when Mrs. Quinney talks about policy, but just a brief overview. A Wellness Advisory Committee comprised of both district staff and community members was created to review current policy. The committee met several times during the school year to create a new wellness policy that aligns with curriculum, policy, and law. The committee's recommended wellness policy was submitted to the Policy Subcommittee for review last evening. It was recommended that it be forwarded to the full committee for approval and adoption. I will now turn the rest of the report over to Mr. Olivo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The third area was fiscal responsibility. The school committee is responsible for reviewing, approving, and overseeing the operation of the annual school budget. This year, the Southbridge School Committee will identify tools or systems needed to sustain and balance budget. This is important to the school committee because the school committee has an obligation to the residents of Southbridge to be fiscally responsible of the resources provided. The school committee recognizes it is important to identify effective tools and systems that will remain in place even if staff changes. Protocols and procedures are the foundation of good business practices. The school committee opted for a committee of the whole budget meetings instead of a Budget Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee. This afforded all members of the opportunity to actively participate in monitoring the FY14, the Fiscal Year 14 budget, and oversee the creation of the Fiscal Year 2015 budget. Superintendent Nimbrough worked extensively with the school committee on developing a budget for Fiscal Year 15, 2015, which accurately reflects the district's needs. The budget has been reformatted, making it much easier to understand and follow as the year progresses. The school committee supported Ms. Sheridan's new procedures for student activity accounts by making appropriate policy changes. Another tool is to establish capital improvement plan based upon identified needs. This is important to the school committee because capital projects must be identified and budgeted in order to effectively plan for the future needs of the school district. Capital needs for Fiscal Year 2015 have been identified and budgeted. These include instructional technology hardware, network, and telecommunications hardware, capital technology, and the acquisition of two special education vehicles. In addition to these immediate needs, the school committee understands it is necessary to create long-term capital and technology plans. It is the intention of the school committee to undertake this task in the 2014-2015 school Another goal was to meet with the Town Council biannually to review the operating budget. This is important to the school committee because the health of the town is reflected in the schools, and the health of the school is reflected in the town. Establishing a good working relationship with Southbridge Town Council is vital for the benefit of the entire community. The school committee has met jointly with the Education and Human Services Subcommittee on February 4th and April 17th to review the operating budget. The Town Council and the school committee worked jointly to increase the school department budget to provide identified needs. Another goal was to participate in interest-based bargaining training. Why this is important to the school committee was because interest-based bargaining is an alternative to traditional positional-based bargaining. It is collaborative process where the parties come together to identify common issues of concern and work together to jointly solve those issues. School committees that have participated in interest-based bargaining report contracts are settled quickly and cite improved relationships between labor unions and administrators. Members of the school committee attended the Massachusetts Educational Partnership Conference to learn more about interest-based bargaining. The school committee planned to participate in IBB training this spring, but busy members were unable to coordinate schedules to attend training sessions this year. It is the intention of the school committee to participate in IBB training in the future. Another section is identifying and prepared for those collective bargaining contracts which are due to be negotiated. This is important to the school committee because collective bargaining is a primary responsibility of the school committee. It is important that the school committee negotiate contracts which are fair, fiscally responsible, and reflect the goals and priorities of this district. What the school committee has successfully negotiated, an agreement with the Southbridge Education Association, which corrected economic disparities, improved the district's ability to recruit and retain personnel, balanced step increases, and standardized the length of the school day. The Negotiations Subcommittee is in the process of negotiating their paraprofessionals and tutors union... I'm sorry, with the paraprofessionals and tutors union. The Maintenance, Constodial, and School Nurses Unions have also requested opening negotiations. In summary, the school committee has had a very productive year. Much has been accomplished in a relatively short amount of time. Much remains to be done. We are grateful to begin the next year with a leader, a plan, and a vision that will be refined once new members join us. We are extremely grateful to Superintendent Nimbrough for his guidance and commitment to the school district. Though he will not be here on a day-to-day basis, we are pleased to be... sorry. We are pleased he has offered to serve as a consultant, mentor, and advisor for the 2014 and 2015 school year. We look forward to working with our new superintendent, Ms. Gardner, and the entire district leadership team to build on the strong foundation that has been set in place over the past 12 months. Thank you.
Well done. I noticed you filled in a couple of words that I missed.
I did.
You did a good job. There is no report of the representative of the Student Advisory Committee this evening, so we will turn to the school committee Subcommittee Reports and the Year in Review. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Curriculum Subcommittee met last evening, June 16th, in Room M100 at 25 Col Ave. Present were Subcommittee Members, myself, Mrs. Congdon, Mrs. Quinney. Also present was Mrs. McLaughlin as a community member and Mr. Brent Abrahamsen as a community member. My first order of business, which was to approve the meeting minutes from our May 19th Subcommittee Meeting, and those were voted on, all in favor. The next thing that we were able to accomplish was our year in review. As Chair, I put together a report that summarized our year in review as a Subcommittee that I will read shortly. Shortly after that, we had our members open forum. At that time, we looked into seeing... we know that there's work that's going to be done over the summer for on our curriculum maps for both ELA and math, and the motion was... well, not a motion, but it was... the request was made that the Subcommittee actually see those final products at the end of the summer, and we also want to make sure that the information relative to these curriculum maps and the amount of work that is going to transpire over the summer is properly communicated to our teachers. Finally, Mr. Abrahamsen, as a community member, was able to give us some information relative to Park. We talked a little bit about the ELL program, and finally, he was very complimentary of our fourth and fifth graders who participated in their show Phantom Toll Booth last week, and was able to share some information that he found on a website that was relative to the show, but also contained mass core standards and lesson plans that, moving forward, perhaps teachers could use as another way to teach the standards and make learning fun. All that being said, our meeting adjourned at 6:59 PM. So moving on to our Curriculum Subcommittee Year in Review for the 2013-2014 school year. Starting on October 1st, our Subcommittee met monthly through June 16th. Our Subcommittee worked closely with the district's Director of Teaching and Learning, Patricia Gardner, and the district's Director of Instruction, which originally was Dr. Sarah Jordan, and then later, Mr. Aaron Osborn, who is currently our Director of Instruction. We had some meetings where we were joined by Ms. Dom Nugent, who is an English-language learner teacher at our middle school and also our part-time ELL coordinator, as well as Ms. Colleen Culligan, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services. We had a meeting in which Mel Blake, the librarian at the middle high school, joined us, and then we also had a second meeting in which Superintendent Nimbrough was present. And often, we were joined by community member, Mr. Brent Abrahamsen. Our Subcommittee began its year discussing curriculum programs and initiatives that can track and increase student achievement. Such programs included mileposts, star reading focused on results, and new teacher induction, and we looked at ways for funding some of these various initiatives through the use of Title I grants. Another one of our main focus was to discuss curriculum mapping. We discussed the use of curriculum maps and looked at sample maps from the Duxbury School District. We learned that the Southbridge Public Schools curriculum maps for ELA and math will be finalized over this summer, and then work will begin in the fall on our Science and Social Studies curriculum maps. We were also advised that mapping should be completed in the near future on specials, including wellness. In December, our Subcommittee conducted a learning walk for the first time, whereby we toured all four schools along with the Director of Teaching and Learning in each respective building principal. Our purpose in doing that was to see with our own eyes what was taking place in the schools so that we could focus on maximizing our educational environments. I want to be perfectly clear, no teacher was evaluated, no teacher was ranked, no teacher was judged. We simply observed what was taking place in the buildings so that we could better understand the educational environment surrounding the students, so that we could get a better understanding of the needs of our students in our district, and also to better prepare ourselves for when it would become necessary for us to set resource priorities during our preparation and finalization of the FY 2015 budget. The majority of our meetings focused on the district's ELL program and the need for drastic changes in this existing program. Specifically, the committee recognized that the district needs to work on a systematic approach in identifying, assessing, and monitoring all ELL students. The need for hiring more licensed ELL teachers was also discussed, and we also need a full-time ELL coordinator. Lastly, we learned that the district not only needs to draft a policy and procedures booklet for the ELL program, but also a proposal for the ELL program for the 2014-2015 school year. Therefore, the bulk of our time at our most recent meetings has been reviewing that draft proposal for our ELL program for the upcoming school year. We've looked at cohorts and the amount of half-day classrooms that can support our ELL students while providing the recommended minimal hours of instruction at all four of our schools. We recognize that our greatest need in our ELL program is at the middle high school, where currently we have 120 students being serviced by only two teachers. Therefore, we hope that this issue can be addressed with additional staff and support. Also, relative to our ELL program, we talked at great length about the English Acquisition Model and how it could possibly help our students. We looked at WIDA testing, home language surveys, parent notification forms, and a placement in the ELL program form. Ms. Dom Nugent was also very helpful in providing our committee with information that she gathered as she visited other school districts in the state who have successful ELL programs, and she shared as a reference with us the English Language Education Program handbooks that she acquired from visiting those districts. Lastly, we discussed the state-mandated Sheltered English Immersion Training that many of our core subject teachers, as well as some of our administrators, have taken this year. And then finally, other items of discussion that occurred at our Subcommittee Meetings throughout the year, we talked about PARK, which is a new state initiative that stands for Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career Students. We talked about place-based learning plans and work-based learning plans. We discussed the Southbridge Public Schools gifted and talented curriculum at our elementary schools. We talked about a library partnership between Eastford Road School and the middle high school. We talked about conducting an optical tour, a tour of the Optical Heritage Museum. Unfortunately, due to timing and other issues out of our control, we have yet to take that tour, but that was something that will absolutely take place as our new school year, our new Subcommittee reconvenes. We also talked about taking a tour of the Stoned Bridge Press Printing Facility, and we also discussed technology, keyboarding, and computer curriculums for our elementary students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. For Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Quinney is going to provide the year in review. I just want to recap last night's meeting very quickly. Items of business included the District Crisis Manual, I've already spoken about that, the Parents' Student Handbook for the 2014-2015 school year, which is still being worked on. There's still some changes that need to be made. The wellness policy, summer school policy, which we'll be voting on later this evening. We also talked about a new background check policy that's necessary as a result of national fingerprinting laws. We did not take official action on that, as we think it merits further discussion and deliberation. And that is what we did last evening, and now I'll turn it over to Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As was discussed earlier, this was our first year of establishing a Wellness Advisory Committee, and tonight, we have two of our community members who will present to the school committee regarding the Wellness Advisory Committee this year. So I turn the floor over to you ladies.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I for one will not be complaining. Because winter will be a homicide to a student. My name is Karen Spiewak. I'm the health educator, and this is...
Jasmine Rivas. I'm the program coordinator for UINC's Voices with Choices.
So we're here tonight representing the Southbridge Public Schools Wellness Advisory Committee to provide you with a brief update regarding our activities to date. Other members include...
Ashley Caprara from the Wellness Department head, Karen Cheka, the head nurse at the Southbridge Middle High School, Lisa Boshon, the nurse at Eastford Road School, Deb Dwindle, the nurse at Cholmon Street School, Katie Alicia, Food Service Director. Community members include Susan Fafford DeRozier, the Harrington Hospital Self-Wellness Program Coordinator, Glenn Jucknow, Executive Director of the Tri-Community YMCA, Kristen McAvoy, Director of the Nutrition Program at Harrington Hospital. Director of the Nutrition Program at Harrington Hospital, myself and Karen.
So the committee mandated by law was established in January and began meeting monthly in order to meet three main objectives. Develop a customized YRBS, which is a survey, participate in data collection at the middle school and high school wellness fairs, draft a wellness policy to be submitted to the district's policy subcommittee that needed to include, but was not limited to, goals for nutrition promotion, goals for nutrition education, goals for other school-based activities to promote wellness, and to update nutrition guidelines. The policy was created in part by reviewing and comparing wellness policies across the state.
The final draft of the wellness policy was approved at our last meeting in May and sent on to the school committee's policy subcommittee for review. The results of the data collected at both health fairs was also forwarded to the subcommittee. The YRBS was implemented last month, and its results was also sent to the school committee, will be also sent to the school committee. The high school survey data was shared with the middle high school wellness department chair, the food service director, and the director of teaching and learning. In closing, on behalf of all the members of our committee, we extend sincere thanks to Erin for keeping us focused on the task at hand, and it was a pleasure working with everyone on the committee.
Absolutely. Thank you, Erin. That concludes our?
Brief presentation.
Brief presentation, yeah, very brief presentations. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Perfect.
Just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
On behalf of the school committee, we know that this was a lot of work, and we know that you're both very busy, and that the other members of your committee are also very busy, and the fact that you took time to do this for us is greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I want to publicly thank everyone on the committee, Jasmine Rivas, Karen Spiewak, Glenn Jucknow, Sue Fafford DeRoziers, Kirsten McAvoy, Lisa Boshon, Katie Alicia, Ashley Caprera, Karen Cheka, and Deb Dwindle. It was a lot of work, and we did meet every month from January through May. We had, having never had a wellness advisory committee, we had a large task in front of us, and I, I thank you all for your very hard work. I appreciate it greatly, and I'm glad that I got to do all that work with you. So thank you to you all. Now on to the policy subcommittee year in review. Members of the policy subcommittee at different times included Cara Donovan, myself, Lauren McLaughlin, and Jill Congdon. At the beginning of the year, our first meeting was in August, we reached out to the district leadership team to find out if there were any specific policies that they felt needed to be addressed as we move forward. At that time, Ms. Sheridan brought to our attention the need for a student activities accounts policy, which then led to the development of policy DL. We revised our bullying policy, J I C F B, I believe, to comply with the new language within the state law. We began our comprehensive review of the school committee policy manual, and as Ms. McLaughlin said, that hadn't been done since two thousand and seven. In conducting that review, we not only checked legal references to make sure that those references were up to date and they weren't laws that had been repealed, we researched to see if there were any other laws that had been implemented since that time that were pertinent to the policies that we were looking at, we researched MAS C model policies, we researched policies from across the state to find policies that were different from the MAS C policy, and then taking into consideration specific needs that we felt our school district needed addressed within those policies. We reviewed section A of the manual, and one area that we held off on was regarding query checks, given the national federal fingerprinting system that was being rolled out and still has some issues that we need to explore and discuss further. The majority of the policies in section B were reviewed, many revisions took place in order to better meet the needs of our district. We also removed a lot of laws that were referenced that had been repealed, and put in new laws that have since been adopted by the state. And moving forward, my hope is that the comprehensive review continues, as well as as concerns arise within the community and within the schools, that each, those policies would be reviewed and revised in order to better meet the needs of our school district. And I believe that is it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have anything to report on negotiation?
We will continue negotiating with SEA Unit C tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, and we will be voting today to ratify a contract that we negotiated for this past year with SEA Unit C.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon, family and community engagement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The family and community engagement subcommittee this year included, at various times, Dr. Domingo, Mrs. McLaughlin, and then later on in the year, we were joined by Mr. Levo and Mrs. Donovan. We met monthly. This year, the family and community subcommittee created a speaker series where we were asked, we were asked different members of the community to come in and speak to the subcommittee about their various organizations and programs to better form a collaboration and understanding. The speakers for the year included PTA President Sandra Aponte, Margaret Morrissey from the Jacob Edwards Library, and Holly Cristo from Literacy Volunteers, Adam Minor, the editor of the Southbridge Evening News, Jill Marie Flores, Program Coordinator of Aspira of Mass, and Lynn Simons of Southbridge Community Connections. All of the speakers informed us of their roles in the community, and we discussed building these relationships. In September, to begin the year, the subcommittee created and distributed a school committee survey. The survey was distributed at each of our four schools' open houses, and we received feedback from about three hundred and fifty parents and families who completed the survey. From these surveys, we found the district needed improvement to bet, where, where the district needed to improve to better support the families and students in the district. It was also informative to see what worked for the parents in the district and what their top concerns were in regards to their children's education. On November twentieth, we held our first parent workshop titled Acronym Mania. The district leadership team designed a list of acronyms and had tables set up throughout the middle high school cafeteria, where parents could find out information on acronyms such as ANET, DIBELS, MCAS, and SAT. Families were encouraged to participate in small group discussions, and teachers and administrators from every school were on hand to answer questions. In the fall, we discussed after-school programs and had the opportunity to visit the Bridge of Faith After-School Program on Main Street and Southbridge. The committee worked to create a parent-teacher-student compact, which was forwarded to the superintendent and the district leadership team in hopes to implement it at the beginning of the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. A list of all parent organizations and their contact information for the Southbridge School District was compiled. The committee discussed welcome packets for the district and what they would like to see in them. The packets would be given to any new incoming student who enters the school, be it pre-K or grade twelve. At our last meeting, we made recommendations for next year's Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, which included school committee being available for one hour a month to listen to the concerns of citizens, continuing the weekly newspaper submissions from the schools to inform the community of what is happening in our schools, and maybe including a weekly Ask the Superintendent, or rotate it by having one school be showcased each month, keeping the speaker series for next year, doing a theme for the month, and having speakers related to each theme to involve the community and the students. Overall, this year was a productive year that flew by. The subcommittee is proud of this year's accomplishments, and we look forward to continuing to involve the community in working together to increase student achievement. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Congdon. Is there any report of the SPED PAC liaison, Mrs. Quinney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to talk about what the SPED PAC is and do a little year in review regarding what has been accomplished, not only for the SPED PAC, but on behalf of the SPED PAC. The SPED PAC is a special education parent advisory council that is mandated by the state. They're an advisory committee to the school committee, so when issues arise with students within the special ed community, they will frequently go to the president of the SPED PAC or one of the chair members and discuss what those concerns are. They try to facilitate getting their concerns addressed through the school system, through Ms. Culligan, or through their individual school chairs. When that doesn't happen, then the SPED PAC then goes to the school committee and advises regarding where, areas that need improvement, or have been challenging for parents or students regarding their special education services. So this year was the first year we've had a liaison to the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and another accomplishment that was made was this year, for the first time, the SPED PAC was able to receive donations and also fundraise, not only for the SPED PAC itself, but to be able to raise funds in order to put back into the school system for children in those special ed programs. So those were some accomplishments. They also had their first spring fling, that was a great hit, and they've also gotten speakers and presenters to come in to present to families about concerns that they have regarding their children's, this year has been sensory integration, sensory processing disorders, and what that means, and how they can better meet their children's needs regarding those. So I thank Ms. Pate for all her work in that, and with that said, the next meeting of the SPED PAC will be this Thursday at six PM in room M one hundred. Again, there will be elections for anyone interested in sitting on the board of the SPED PAC. Please come and receive more information and throw your hat in the ring for that. And also, it will, following that meeting, be final presentation in this series regarding sensory integration by Anita Poolen will be put on. So if anybody has any questions or concerns regarding sensory integration and processing, and what that looks like, and how to better help their children, or children in general, that would be a great resource for you all to attend. So again, six o'clock, room M one hundred, twenty-five Col Ave for the meeting, and six thirty for the presentation by Anita Poolen. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinney. This evening, we're pleased to have Miriam Krantz and Courtney Brusso to present information on the summer reading program.
Welcome, and thank you very much for coming. Thanks.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Miriam Krantz. I teach eighth grade ELA at Southbridge Middle High School.
I'm Courtney Brusso. I'm the nine through twelve ELA department head, as well as a teacher for English for grades eleven and twelve.
Okay, so I want to start by introducing the novels that the middle school students will be reading this summer. The sixth grade novel is called The View from Saturday by E.L. Konisberg. The seventh grade novel is Liar and Spy by Rebecca Stead, and the eighth grade novel is The Outsiders by S.E. Hinton. All three authors of these novels appear on the Common Core Recommended Authors List, and all three novels deal with the themes of bullying and stereotyping. The summer reading assignment requires students to use Bloom's Taxonomy, in other words, higher-order thinking skills, to provoke and promote critical thinking while reading. Students will be required to respond to ten critical thinking questions and task, tasks, excuse me, two of which, analyzing and evaluating, students will be able to exercise their autonomy in selecting options based on interest. This assignment is due no later than Friday, August twenty-ninth, which is the end of the first week of school. The completion of the summer reading assignment will count as the first test grade of the year. Also, many of the learning activities in the students' ELA classes will revolve around this summer reading assignment, and the advisory block, which is something that is new and is still in the developing stages, will also use the summer reading assignment to discuss the important themes of these novels, which are issues that are faced by many students across the United States today.
Continuing on with the analyzing and evaluating the higher-order thinking, grades nine through twelve have a list of options that they can choose from. They're high-interest novels that deal with a lot of teen issues going on, so every student in the high school is going to be required to choose a book from that list, and then on that same day as the middle school, on Friday, August twenty-ninth, they'll be completing an argumentative writing assignment where they will argue for whether or not the book should be included in a high school curriculum based on its merits and its lessons and themes, et cetera. In addition, those students that are in honors-level courses, for ninth grade, they will be reading Looking for Alaska by John Green, and will have an additional assignment for that. Tenth grade is reading Feed by M.T. Anderson, with a symbolism and character project on that as well. Eleventh grade is reading One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest by Ken Kessie, and will work on plot and elements of fiction. And then, the twelfth grade is going to be reading Year of Wonders by Geraldine Brooks, with discussion questions, mostly higher-order thinking, and it's supposed to mock what they would experience in a college English class. In addition, we also have AP Language and AP Literature courses. AP Language are going to be reading Their Eyes Were Watching God by Zora Neale Hurston, Mark Twain's Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, and My Antonia by Willa Cathar. They will have a synthesis essay that they will have to write, as well as an exam that's structured similar to the AP exam that they'll be encountering in May. And the AP Literature class has four books that they will have to read, since they are seniors, and more is expected of them. They will be reading a drama, Glass Menagerie by Tennessee Williams, A Tale of Two Cities by Charles Dickens, Kite Runner, and How to Read Literature Like a Professor, so, which is often offered in most freshman English courses. In addition, in college, not in high school, in addition, our librarian, Mel Blake, has contacted Jacob Edwards Library, and so they are prepared to order extra copies of all of these texts, and hopefully have them on hand. In addition, in previous years, we were able to purchase a lot of books for students. We still have some left over, so tomorrow, after their exams, we're going to have an informational session in the gym where they can sign out books if we have them available. In addition, we also have an Edmodo, which is an online course, kind of like a class, almost like a Facebook, but for school, where a couple of teachers have logged on, so they'll be available all throughout the summer to answer questions that the students have. That's about it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Levo?
Yeah, Madam Chair. What was that website that you just mentioned?
It's Edmodo dot com. And tomorrow, during the information session in the gym, we'll have a booth set up, and students can get a pass code that they can log in, and they can chat with it. Also, the assignments, I forgot to mention, are also, all the assignments are also on the school website, so in case the students lose the packets, they're also there. But Edmodo dot com is set up like Facebook, and the students can message teachers and ask them for assistance. They can also talk to each other, if we set it up that way, so they can ask peers assistance on things, if they wish.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To you, Mr. Krantz, I just have a real quick question about the middle school side of things. Have the kids already received their packets, or if they haven't, do you know what the timeline is for that?
Yes, they should have all received their packets. They went out last week and this week.
Okay.
And they are also available in the main office. It's also, I believe, on the website, and I believe Jacob Edwards Library will also have copies of them.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank and compliment all the staff that put together and worked hard on creating a reading list that's not only of high interest to the students, but also has literary value. And very important that young people realize that education is twenty-four-seven. You don't shut your brain off on June nineteenth and come back in the fall. And I think one of the summer programs we have for younger kids is very important, because there's a lot of research that shows that if you don't do anything in the summertime, there is loss. And I want to compliment the August twenty-ninth date, that's something that's very important, because I was told in the past, kids were given reading lists, and there was no, very little follow-up. By mandating it grade by grade, having kids debate, having them think and talk, most of the time, in order to talk, you have to think. Not always true in our society, but when you have the primary source in front of you, you've had time to read it, you've had time to analyze, you'd have time to discuss it with your colleagues, some great insights ought to come forth. So I just want to compliment the entire department on working so hard on this, and the wonderful list that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney, do you have something?
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment some of these selections. My Antonia is one of my favorite books, and then I saw that The Kite Runner, and that's a really, really hard and deep book, so I think there is no doubt that students will be challenged over the summer. And I was just curious, there's a bunch, a bunch of options for the ninth, tenth, and eleventh, and twelfth graders, and set books for sixth, seventh, and eighth- 11th, and 12th graders, and set books for sixth, seventh, and eighth, just so that it's ensured that those books will be read or the availability of books and... The novels were selected based on a theme that we thought was very important for students to discuss. And so these, since the three authors of these novels appear on the Common Core Recommended Authors List, we felt that, well, by choosing these novels, they tie into the themes that we feel are important for middle, especially middle school students, who are at such a pivotal age when they enter middle school, and they're so impressionable. And bullying is something that happens very much in middle school. It seems to be centered in middle school, really. And so we felt it was important to tackle this theme and to pick authors that were on that list at the same time, to make sure we were following the Common Core.
Excellent.
And I hope during the course of the school year, that you select books, and I'm not much on choices for kids. I think these are the books that you should be able to read and discuss. And I think there should be a core list of a couple dozen books that, when you finish high school, that you've read, and you can discuss with other people. So something that during the ELA curriculum meetings and so on, you might say that we might want to have a monthly seminar on a particular book or a particular section of a book. So kids have to read it, have to think about it, and have to discuss it. And the best thing in the world is a roundtable discussion on that because you can't hide. Thank you.
Thank you. I was... I was just going to say that I think having a theme of bullying and then being able to discuss that coming into August kind of sets a tone moving forward regarding expectations and what behavior. So I think that that was very, very well thought-out plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gardner?
Thank you. And I would just like to add that, you know, I agree with Mr. Nembroke. Our English department has done an amazing job, and they've done an amazing job this year. And I think especially one reason that we chose just the one for middle school is that we're trying to get a base of knowledge so that if a teacher needs to discuss a book, every student will have read it. And also for MCAS at times, an open response question will be in a book that you have read either in or out of school. And we want to make sure that they've read at least one book somewhere along the way. But mostly, and the main reason is that they will have a general body of knowledge that they can carry through with them. So at least through eighth grade, they will have three novels that any teacher, for many different subjects, as Ms. Krantz said, they cover a wide variety of themes and a wide variety of lessons. So we're hoping that it's something that will be used across the curriculum.
Thank you. Anybody else? I, thank you ladies very much. Appreciate your presentation. I had also contacted Margaret Morrissey at Jacob Edwards Library, and I invited her to this meeting tonight. She did offer to come, but she also gave me some information to share with everybody. She said that there's a new children's librarian that just joined staff, and they've already made two school visits. They visited Charlton Street School and Eastford Road School, and they're hoping to visit the other schools. They wanted to remind everybody that the Jacob Edwards Library offers its summer reading program this year to all age group, including adults, which is nice in the community. So parents can go to the library with their children, or anybody in the community is welcome. The kickoff for the summer reading program will be Monday, June 23rd. There's going to be an ice cream social, 6:30 to 7:30 for kids 11 years old and under. There are quite a few events and programs offered throughout the summer. A flyer is available. I've asked it to be posted on the district website. And copies of the flyer were going to be disseminated to all the elementary schools this week, Monday. And so that's it. So I wanted to thank Margaret Morrissey for that information, and thank you too for coming to share.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have one other thing that I want to add, as is some program at Jacob Edwards Library. And one of the reasons why New England is ahead of the rest of the country in educational program is because every little town has a Carnegie library. And I think that one of the goals of the school committee and the school system should be that by the end of September, every single child have a library card. They've all been to video stores, but how many have been inside of a library? I think that should be absolutely compulsory and develop that particular program. So I think PAT needs to put on your agenda as something to do. I think the library would be happy to come and have 100% participation, Southbridge kids with the library. And if you want to eat lunch, you've got to show your library card.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that the kindergarten class this year, Mrs. Trahan's class and Mrs. Wayman's class, I don't know about the others, but they were, they had planned, every year, they plan a trip to the library to get kids their library cards. This year, it rained both of those days, so the library was kind enough to come in and sign the kids up and give them their library cards in the classroom.
Nice.
Starting off on a good foot in kindergarten.
Jacob Edwards Library is a very well-run valuable resource in the community, and everybody should avail themselves of the services offered there. So we thank Margaret Morrissey and her team for the good work that they do. We're moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, Report of the Finance Director. Ms. Sheridan, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, May 2014, crunch time. We've expended 81% of fiscal year '14 budget. We're still on track to have a balanced budget this year, but I am monitoring it daily. So we're happy to report that we never had to freeze the budget. We're just monitoring it to make sure that we're able to use the funds, but not go beyond our budget. I prepared and attached the budget transfer list for the school committee approval. It's $263,729. Grant funding. The total grant funding for this year was $3,225,029. With the budget of $24,63868, this grant total is about 13% of the total budget, which you can see is an extremely valuable revenue pot for the Southbridge schools. Grant management is very important, and I'd like to thank Erin Osborne, Deanna Martinez, and Lisa Russo. They're a great team managing these grants. Some of the examples of expenditures that were covered by the grant funding was salaries, supplies, contracted services, professional development, summer school stipends for employees, advisors, mentors, professional development, and some of the curriculum. The total grant funding expended thus far is $2,457,909, with the balance remaining of $767,119. I have been assured by the grant team that all of these remaining funds have designated expenditures, and all monies will be expended. The grants have 6/34 and 8/3114 end dates. Unfortunately, this is our last year for Race to the Top, which is in the amount of That's an example of some of the challenges you face with budgeting in school systems. That's a pretty big part that we had to absorb into the general fund. The E-Rate discount. I received confirmation from the town that the refund from Verizon in the amount of $67,214 has been received, and the monies will be available for the school to use for fiscal year 2015. The E-Rate funds were very, very helpful this year for us, especially with telephone and internet expenses. Transportation. As I've reported in the past months, the sped transportation was up. The regular transportation went up this year to additional, due to additional late bus runs that we added for the students. But luckily, we had some homeless transportation reimbursements from the state that helped us offset that. We just got notification today that we're getting an amount of $12,456,000 for this year's reimbursement, and we also got $24,502 earlier in the year. With some of those funds, we were able to purchase the sped van, which was about $15,295, which will help us to curb those costs next year. Sped tuition, again, that has been up, that is up this year. However, we do have the circuit breaker funds to cover those overages. As of the current date, it's about $148,515 over budget in sped tuition costs. Circuit breaker, I'm still awaiting my final circuit breaker check, the last of four installments of $139,148. The total circuit breaker allocation this year was $556,589. I have been informed by the circuit breaker, informed that circuit breaker is going to be increasing for fiscal year '15 from $40,512 per student to $41,000, I mean, rising to $40,512 from $41,408, which is what it was this year, an increase of $896 per student. Utilities, as we noted with the harsh winter we had, we had overages in utilities this year, but I was able to offset some of those with the rental of facilities revenue. I am hoping for a much milder winter next year. Copy machines. The machines that we have right now are getting old and are beginning to be costly. Walter Solzak, the Director of Operations, and I have plans this summer to go over the proposals that we're getting from three different companies to hopefully get some new copy machines in and keep within the budget that we have. The town gave us some monies in the capital to fund these leases. That's all I have right now, in case somebody has some questions.
Thank you. Were you going to just say something?
I was going to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Sheridan? No, thank you very much.
I just want to say that by carefully monitoring and reporting on a regular basis and making sure that all of the cost centers know exactly how much they have to operate with, we've been able to finish this year with a healthy sum, and we have put aside enough that we can function next year. And I said before, I was very proud, after reading all the papers around here, many of the towns are laying people off and not being able to meet this, so we, for financial reasons, we can expand the programs and continue to have a full complement of staff and maintain class sizes and so on. And that's due to the hard work of a lot of people, but Karen has worked very hard to give you monthly reports, regular statements, and our grants have been expended properly. We've had audits, none of them, and they came back very positive. And so the finances in this town and school system, let me say, are in very good hands now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report of the Superintendent, Mr. Nembroke.
I have a couple of items. Number one, regarding food services, we received notice today that the federal government had put together the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, and that was intended to provide access to meals for all eligible students in high poverty, LEAs as they call it, local educational agencies. And one of the big bugaboo's and bane's of school systems was having people qualify, filling out forms, bringing them back, and so on. And every school system that I ever been in, you had good, maximum participation elementary, less in the middle, and then very little at the high school level because it was, the form was cumbersome, the form was put together in such a way that high school kids resented that and didn't bring it back. So we were losing out on all that. So with the change in the rules and then school districts that have 40% or more free and reduced lunch would be eligible for this, and then Kathy Alicia Tilton, her name is now, and her team worked real hard in applying for this universal grant program, and then this fall, we will be eligible for universal free lunch program and breakfast program. Every kid will get a free meal, and there won't be any qualifications. We won't have to go through application processes, having little fairs for kids to bring them in, offering them ice cream and so on, so we can qualify everybody. Because it is an important source of revenue for school systems. It's also important that we qualify for E-Rate rebates, we qualify for Title I funds, et cetera. So this allows us, we'll still have to identify and then report in May of every, of every year, what are exact percentages of kids that are eligible for this, but we don't have to go through the cumbersome aspect of that. Secondly, through the diligent work of the Finance Department, we found out that we've been providing food services Trinity Catholic Academy at public school expense for a number of years. And when we informed of that, obviously, it became quite a bit of a shock that we're not going to do that anymore. So we've met and Ms. Sheridan met this afternoon with representatives, and that we will enter into a contract with them to provide food services to them during a transition period, and then they're going to go out and contract or develop their own food service program. But it was a bit of a shock to us when we found this out. So now that's been rectified. And quite a bit of comment and discussion about merits of Park, the Common Core, MCAS, and I've been a proponent of testing for as long as I can remember because before we had No Child Left Behind, each state and each community and each district was allowed to develop their own standards, and it was amazing how many people were doing great. And then when you came out with an international comparison test, we would end up 17th, 20th, and so on, 31st in the world. So there had to be some consistent standards and No Child Behind, No Child Left Behind. We used to joke about No Child's Behind, Left Untested, but that's another story. It got a little carried away, okay? But at least the testing program has gone through. There is, Common Core has pushed back on that, but I'm recommending at the next meeting the school committee vote to continue with MCAS. And the reason for that is very straightforward, is that we need historical data. We need to show the improvements that are being made, and I can guarantee you that our test scores will go up substantially this fall when they come back. Because we've paid attention to it, we've had, heard teachers talk about what they were doing, and it's been a very rigorous approach to ensure that the kids do the best they can, because this is the one measure that the state uses. And by, if we changed the midstream now to Park, we wouldn't have the historical data that we need. So that's my recommendation. With that, continue, show the steady incline, and the hurdle will be moving roughly northeast on that chart. Lastly, this is my last meeting, and it's been a blast. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
I just wanted to say one thing, and I wrote it down over here. As I listen to the various reports of the subcommittees, I think that the community has to give a big round of applause to the school committee members sitting in here that have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours for the benefit of your kids. I think that's important. Robert Maidenhutchins said a long time ago, he was president of Harvard University, spoke about the best education for the best is the best education for all. And then a question that I says, not only do I want the best education for my kid, but I want it for your kid too. So it's worrying about the neighbor's child because a well-educated community is crucial. And like I said, you've heard me talk about education by zip code here in this country. So you heard the reports, lots have been taken on, lots of, hundreds of hours of unselfish work has been done by the committee here, and they'll continue doing it. So it goes, too often goes unnoticed, and the only time you hear anything is a criticism. So I just want to say publicly, thank you. I've had a, I was going to say, I had a great time. I had an interesting time, working with all of you. And I think that one thing I can say when I move on is that collectively, we've left this school system on a much better and firmer ground that can move forward. And all kids will be getting the kind of service and attention that they deserve, not just some. So thank you very much for your collective work. I just want to give you all a hand.
Thank you very much. Under School Committee Actions, I just want to make everybody aware that we will vote on A, Agenda Items 12, B, and C, the votes to ratify the contract between Ms. Gardner and Mr. Nembroke for next year, will be moved to after executive session. We're going to meet in executive session first, then we will reconvene in here for a vote on those two. So we will, the school committee actions will be A to D to E. And then there were several Agenda Addendums published in recent days. One is 12F will be a vote to approve budget transfers. 12G will be a vote to approve Southbridge Public Schools 2014 Summer School Program. And Vote H will be a vote to approve the Superintendent's recommendation for statewide testing next year. So just wanted to make you aware of that. So first, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12A, which is a motion to approve a collective bargaining agreement, memorandum of understanding between, a memorandum of agreement between the Southbridge School Committee and the Southbridge Education Association, SEA, Unit C. On the agenda, originally read Unit B, it is actually Unit C, paraprofessionals and tutors union, for the time period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Subject to ratification by SEA Unit C. Do I have a motion?
Someone?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? May I just ask if this has been ratified by SEA Unit C?
Yes. SEA Unit C met on Monday evening or afternoon, and they ratified it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this agenda item?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Nembroko.
This is a contract that had expired, well, ready to be expired, and a lot of work was put into it, and I think that the next contract needs to be brought forth, because it has various tiers. And one of the, my objections to the original contract was that all powers were treated alike, and there was no distinction made between powers that were more trained and dealing with different kinds of students that needed more intensive supports, and they were all placed in the same salary guide, and longevity was the only criteria for improving. So, we're in the process of changing that. Let me say that the Unit C is very receptive to this change, and we're proposing tiers one, tiers two, tiers three, and tiers four, which will have different degrees of responsibility, different degrees of ability, training, and so on. So, that'll have a very great impact, because one of the biggest difficulties we've had is that when you have a high-needs student, high-needs student that will need intensive support and so on, it's very difficult to get what you're paying a low wage, and the only criteria you had was years here. So, we're now able to distinguish and then pay for ability and work. So, I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with that. This was just part one to get last year covered, and then we're, the process, hopefully, we can wrap up much of it tomorrow.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. As I said, Agenda Items 12, B, and C are being moved to after executive session. Move on to Agenda Item 12D. This would be, it's written on the agenda as the first reading of School Committee Policy File IHCA.
Madam Chair.
Do a motion. Yes.
I'm moved to suspend the rules so that we can vote this policy tonight, given that summer school starts in just a few weeks.
Okay. Mrs. Quinney has made a motion to suspend the rules. Do I have a second to the motion? Mrs. Congdon seconds the motion. The motion to suspend the rules requires a two-thirds vote of the committee. Roll call, please. Oh, is there any other, is there any?
No.
May I have a roll call, please, on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. And now, the motion to?
I'm?
Restate, please.
Move to vote, policy IHCA, summer schools.
Thank you. So, we have a motion to vote the newly revised summer school policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon seconds the motion. Is there any discussion?
I just didn't know, Madam Chair, if it was newly revised, if it should just be read.
I think it should be read, yes. Would you like me to read the policy? The policy reads, "Southbridge Public Schools will offer summer school as a supplement to the instruction provided during the school year, consistent with the Southbridge Public Schools' budget and grant-funded programs. Specific offerings will be established annually. Instruction will be delivered by licensed, highly qualified staff. Students may be recommended for summer school for remedial enrichment or credit recovery purposes. Credits may be granted to high school students in line with the regulations of the school district. In-district and out-of-district rates will be set on an annual basis for all credit recovery programs. All summer programs will be subject to annual approval by the School Committee." Any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The next vote is preceded by the following declaration. I'm going to read it prior to the vote. Whereas it is the duty of the School Committee to set policies for the education of children in our community, and whereas reported by Mass Association of School Superintendent Executive Director Tom Scott based on information available on the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website, between 1996 and 2008, thirteen years, there was a total of 4,055 documents, 312 on average per year, that required action by local school districts in response to externally imposed mandates and regulations, yet that number increased dramatically to a total of 5,382 documents, an average of 1,077 per year between 2009 and 2013. Whereas educators in our community are having difficulty carrying out their responsibilities due to this rising tide of state mandates, including most recently, a state teacher evaluation system, district determined measures, and Park field testing, requiring educators to respond first to bureaucratic requirements other than classroom instruction. Therefore, I would need a motion. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion to vote to support the Massachusetts Association of School Commanding mandates as read.
Second?
Thank you. Motion made by Mrs. Donovan, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Boss, did you ask?
Yeah. Ever since that reform and so on, there've been many, many mandates, many of them unfunded, that have added to it. And Association of School Committees, together with Association of School Superintendents, have called upon the state to review what they're already requesting, find out which ones are not make, are not priorities, and refrain from adding additional ones. We have enough to do. And I think that part of the issue, when they keep adding new mandates with quick timelines, it's easy to sit in an office and do that. When you're out in the field, it's very, very difficult. Last year, we had a great deal of difficulty with the new mandated teacher evaluation program. It wasn't until March that we were finally able to get it approved by the union, and then we only had two months now to follow through a very rigid and strict set of dates and visits and evaluations. So, I think that they just need to calm down a little bit, and I think that I want to compliment and commend the two associations for calling on the state, and every school board, every school committee in the Commonwealth has been asked to do this. So, therefore, we in Southbridge recommend supporting this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Quinney?
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify that the vote to support the MASC mandate would be that we would call on the State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to refrain from adding new test mandates and other initiatives to revisit the mandates already imposed on districts with a view to reducing interference with classroom instruction, thus allowing educators to do their work.
Thank you. Thank you for restating the motion. Is there any other discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. The next is Agenda Item 12F, this was an addendum, a vote to approve budget transfers, the budget transfers for fiscal year 2014, as noted in the budget transfer sheet, provided in the amount of $263,729.68. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Olivo makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item 12G is a vote to approve the Southbridge Public Schools' 2014 Summer School Program as presented to the School Committee on May 28, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Donovan makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olivo. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Just so the public know, we're required by our own policy to vote on the summer school program annually. This was a condition of the previously existing policy and is also a condition of the newly revised policy, so that's the reason for the vote. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. And Agenda Item 12H, a vote to approve the Superintendent's recommendation for MCAS statewide, for statewide testing in 2014, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, first, that because the state hasn't approved Park or implemented it as a statewide tool, that it makes sense to stay with the MCAS, as well as, we already have baseline data regarding how we performed on the MCAS for several years, and in order to have that longitudinal data showing our improvement, I think that it is the wise choice to continue to use MCAS as our statewide test in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Unfinished business, there is none. Under new business, the next regular School Committee meeting will be held July 1, 2014, in Council Chambers. This will be a reorganizational meeting after the June 24 election. It will be followed by a brief business meeting, member forum. Do you want to do member forum now, or do you want to do it after, at the end, when we return? Just a question. Do it now? Okay. Do it now, member forum. Are there any members who'd like to speak? Mr. Olivo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to mention that Eastford Road School had their kindergarten graduation last Thursday, and it was a really nice program. Congratulations to Mr. Kim and the students for a job well done on their musical performance. A big thank you to all the teachers and faculty in our schools, and best wishes for a great summer. Second, I would like to mention eighth grade graduation is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at San Marcos Middle High School Auditorium. And lastly, I would also like to mention that San Marcos, I'm sorry, I said San Marcos. I apologize. Southbridge Middle High School. Grades 9 and 11 awards program will be held Thursday, June 19, at 8:30 AM. It has also been advised that if you plan on attending this program, that you arrive early so that seating may be arranged. I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olivo. Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would just like to thank the public for allowing me to do my part on this committee to serve you, to help improve student achievement in our school district. It was a rough start to the year on this committee, but I wanted to thank Superintendent Nembroko for all of his hard work this year, and for sharing the same goals and visions of the School Committee, and helping to rebuild a school district. We have good people here who believe in the children of our community. Just yesterday, a parent wrote a letter to the editor in the Southbridge News thanking her child's kindergarten teacher for making such a difference in her daughter's life. So many kids in this district come from varying walks of life, and all of them need to be given the chance to be provided a good education. I would also like to thank Chairwoman McLaughlin for stepping up to be the chair of this committee, which at times can be a full-time job. Thank you, everyone. I'd also like to say, on behalf of the West Street School Playground Committee, I would like to invite the community to the West Street School Community Build Day on Saturday, August 2, at 8:00 AM. Please come and join in the fun of building a new playground at West Street School. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Congdon. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. Mostly, the first item that I wanted to talk about was just some information. I know at our last meeting, Ms. Alicia Tilton was talking about our summer feeding program, and tonight, we heard about the summer reading program that will be taking place at the library. I just wanted to remind families and caretakers and daycare workers that there will be free lunch every day at the library, being served from 11 to 1:00, that the lunch will be served in the children's room, and the dates run from July 7 through August 15. So, you just need to show up between 11 and 1:00, and as long as the child is under the age of 18, they will be served a free lunch. Just closing up end-of-the-year things in our schools, yesterday, I had the fantastic opportunity to work with members of the Lions Club and some other volunteers to provide a cookout for the entire school at West Street. We fed our teachers, and we fed every child in that building. We had hot dogs. Mrs. Congdon's husband, Kevin Congdon, was one of our main chefs. Louis Latour was there. Calvin, I'm sorry, Calvin, I don't know your last name, but he was a great chef as well. But it was just so great for the kids. Everybody came out, they grabbed a paper plate, and Mr. Lab passed out ice cream sandwiches. They sat on the lawn, they had their field day, and then at 1:00, everything was followed by an outdoor school concert, for grades 1 through 5, and also the 5th grade band. It was a beautiful day all around, weather-wise, and the kids were, the greatest thing was just the smiles on their faces and the manners. Every single one of those kids said thank you to me as they walked through the line, so kudos to the kids that are there. I mentioned last week that Phantom Toll Booth was coming up. I was able to attend their show, and it was fantastic. Those 4th and 5th graders did a dynamic job, and it isn't easy. And also to the director, Mrs. Brackett, who always puts her heart and soul into that play every year, and it shows. So, I wanted to congratulate them. I wanted to say that, again, with Secretary Malone here last week, I was very honored and privileged to partake in that tour with him, to personally meet him, and to, you know, share thoughts as a School Committee member of what we're looking for here, and to be so grateful that somebody at that stature would take the time out to listen to us. So, I wanted to thank him for that. Last Friday, I was at Charlton Street School with other members of the School Committee. We were at Charlton Street School for their Flag Day celebrations, as well as their Memorial Day celebrations, with Mr. Mike Trombley, Mr. Montigny and his staff, Kathleen Catterett, Mrs. Kenda, they always do a fantastic job, so I wanted to thank them. I want to personally thank Mr. Montigny. I know that we invited him here this evening, and he respectfully declined. However, this is his last year as principal at Charlton Street School, and there's no doubt that he has put his heart and soul into the work over there, and that is a fantastic school. And I personally wanted to thank him and wish him the very best on his retirement. And last but not least, again, I've said this before, but publicly thank Mr. Nembroko for all the work that he has done during his time here in our school district. He is absolutely right that this district is nowhere near where it was when he first came here, and it just takes a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication, and it takes courage, and sometimes you make friends, and sometimes you make enemies, but when you're trying to do what's best for everybody, that's something that he did, and I sincerely thank him for all of his work. And that is all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I also was able to attend the Class Day at Eastford Road School, and I don't know how many of you have tried to corral kindergarteners, never mind three to four classrooms full of kindergarteners, and coordinate them in both music and movement, but I, having done that on a very small level, think that Mr. Kim deserves a very large award. He did a fantastic job with all those kids followed and were rather well-coordinated, and they knew all the words, and it was really an amazing show. I know that Mrs. Small helped do all the art that was there, and all those teachers and paraprofessionals had to work very hard in order to ensure that came out without a hitch. So, thank you to all of them, and congratulations to all the kindergarteners who will be stepping up to the elementary schools in the fall. The Phantom Toll Booth, I was able to attend on Friday, and as Mrs. Donovan said, it was a fantastic show. I, 4th and 5th graders have a lot of ability and confidence that exceeds mine. They did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. The West Street School Field Day on Monday, they, their show, Mr. Heath coordinated, which was fantastic. They said it was a Beatles theme, so the 1st through 5th graders all sang one Beatles song, and again, it amazes me that people are able to coordinate classes in a fashion And again, it amazes me that people are able to coordinate classes in, in a fashion that was both entertaining as well as well-produced. So, thank you to Mr. Heath and all the staff at West Street School for that, and the Lions for their cook-off participation. Charlton Street School also had a cook-off, and the Knights of Columbus cook-out provided the food and cooked that for the kids. And I guess it's 22 years that they've been donating their time and food to Charlton Street School in that capacity. So, thank you, not only to the Lions, but to the Knights of Columbus as well. Also, this past week, the 8th graders took a trip to Camp Foskett, and thank you to Mrs. Jalbert, who was able to pull that off, and to the 8th graders, who I have heard had a wonderful time and were extraordinarily well-behaved. So, I think that is everything for that. I want to thank the community for the opportunity to sit up here. It has been quite a year with a lot of work. I think, as a committee, we've accomplished a lot despite lots of obstacles. I think we've been focused on all the students of the district and ensuring that they all receive the quality education that they deserve. I think our community deserves that, our students deserve that, and we, teachers, administrators, deserve a district that we can be proud of, and ensuring that every child gets the quality education and the support that's required in order to ensure that happens is definitely a goal of mine, and I think collectively, as a School Committee, we've been committed to that in seeing our district move forward. I think many amazing things are happening in many classrooms in our community, in homes in our community. I think we have a school district that we can be really proud of. I think, unfortunately, we have a Level 4 district stigma over us. I think if people saw all the amazing things that were happening in our district, that they would be extraordinarily proud to be residents of Southbridge and have their students be students within the Southbridge School District. I want to thank Mrs. McLaughlin, who did step up to be the chair of the School Committee. It has certainly been a lot of work, and I appreciate your willingness to do that. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Nembroko for his service to our school district and to our students in focusing on students and their achievement, and ensuring that the education that they're provided at every level is the quality of an education that they all deserve. And I look forward to next year, as Ms. Gardner takes her role on as superintendent. I think the foundation has been set, and I hope and anticipate we're just going to continue on making progress and closing those achievement gaps, and continuing to improve upon the education that all of our students receive. So, thank you.
Thank you. May I just say quickly a couple of things? I also, too, wanted to thank Mr. Montigny for all of his years of service to the district. I had the opportunity to attend Flag Day, which is always a great celebration at Charlton Street School. And Mr. Montigny, I think, got a little bit emotional at that ceremony, recognizing that it was his last Flag Day celebration. Hopefully, he'll come back and visit, but just to thank him for his work with our schools and for coming out of retirement to help when asked, when the call was asked. I also want to thank the staff at Southbridge Middle High School, and especially the 8th grade teaching staff, who supported all the 8th grade students with a dinner dance last week, followed by a trip to Camp Foskett this Monday, and are supporting them with their graduation tomorrow. They have really done a phenomenal job trying to make this a special milestone for those students. So, my gratitude to them. I also want to just say, thank you for your kind words. It has been truly an honor and a privilege to serve this group, a harder, working, more dedicated group of people I cannot imagine. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, for your faith in me, for helping me, for not chastising me too much when I've screwed up. I really appreciate the opportunity I was given. So, thank you for that. Now, we need a vote to go into executive session to, number one, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 3, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 2. And the Chair so declares.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Quinney, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Again, the meeting will reconvene in open session for the purpose on voting on Agenda Items 12B and 12C. Welcome back to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. We have returned from executive session. The time is 9:34 PM. There are two items on the agenda. We will be voting on Agenda Item 12B, the vote to ratify a contract between the Southbridge School Committee and Ms. Patricia Gardner, as Superintendent of Schools, for the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item 12C, this is a vote to ratify a contract between the Southbridge School Committee and Mr. Bassan Nembroko, as consultant to the Superintendent of Schools, for the